Board, I show seven o'clock. Audience, I show seven o'clock. So could you all please rise and we'll open the meeting with the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. It's March 11th, 2019, and we're just commenting that we can still see daylight outside, and I think it was about 50 degrees when I came in today. Just now, just 7:00 PM. Maybe we're through the winter. We don't know. We have bills to pay with salt and sand and plow parts still, but it's what we do. Anyway, we opened the meeting, and at our last monthly meeting, we did notice that we would do a public hearing tonight to do a routine task in my mind. It's we in the village and all municipalities are subject to the 2% tax cap still, and up on the wall, I've put a little chart for those out there. This is budget years. We begin a fiscal year, June 1st, and it's a little hard to read, but the catch-22 of tax cap is it's the Consumer Price Index or 2%, whichever is lower. In the years when the CPI wasn't as high as 2.46, sometimes we had much lower tax caps. But regardless, we have a 2% tax cap that we're looking at. What I'm setting the stage for is we have started working on our budget, and we always like to put in place, if in case we need it, the ability to exceed the tax cap. You might note tonight, we have three board members here out of five, but we do have enough here to work on this. We have a quorum, and it is over the 60% rule for certain tax cap regulations and rules. But with that, I would ask the board that we open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All favor? Aye. And I'll describe a little more. What we need to do is it's actually a formal process where the basis for a public hearing is we have to adopt a local law to give ourselves the ability to exceed, and then if we create a budget that does not exceed, we then later have to do a modification to our local law where we rescind the local law. We've done it pretty much every year for the past five or six years, I think. Our goal is always to stay within the cap. We do have a little bit of news. The actual assessed value, the base assessment we use to generate some of our rate per thousand, that's gone up a little bit, meaning more properties are worth a little more in the village by rule of what the assessor looks at. I have a feeling some of the newer ones are not yet rolled into our assessed base. We have to work on what we have this year. But with that, like I said, we've opened up the public hearing. I've kind of explained what's driving it and what we have done historically. But we would welcome any public comment, if there is any. And later on, depending on comments and our input, later on, we'll act on it more formally. We'll give a moment. Our attendees are very familiar, I think, with the routines, so like I said, we try to make it so it doesn't happen. But I thought it was an interesting exhibit how, if you look, if you want to call it, the CPI is essentially the inflation rate. It's 2.46. We can only go up 2% by rule, and you might have followed the news that the state's trying to make that 2% cap permanent. It's always been extended outward from when it was first passed by the state, but they're looking to make that a permanent reality for us. What it means in the real world of budgets is they're saying, in the general economy, the things they measure went up 2.46%. That would be ranging from health insurance to tires to fuel to paper. You know, if you aggregate all the things that you buy, they're very similar things we buy. In the past year, that went up 2.46%, but okay municipality, you only can get 2% more. So essentially, you're saying you can't quite match what the regular economy did. The other side of that is, within ours, in many ways, we're a little heavy because we do give health insurance to our full-time employees with different formulas, but that has about a 9% to 10% increase, and that's a big change on a big number. But these are things we work with when we're creating the budget. But it sounds like, from the audience, I don't hear too much comment. Is there anything from the board itself? We've been in workshop and talking about this. I would therefore move that we close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Like I said, we'll move to our regular meeting then. Tonight, Mr. Jay Trapp, our planning zoning trustee, is out with the flu, and Mr. Charles Lang is traveling, so neither are available. I was able to talk to Jay and give him a little update. He's coming around, but he's not quite in the mood to sit and be near people, and we might be better off that he's not here spreading anything. Anyway, on the routine side of things, let's look at the minutes from the various meetings in February, and Cindy threw in one for March 7th. That would be the last budget workshop that we had, March 7th. So the main meeting was February 11th, then we had workshops and budget workshops February 19th, 28th, and March 7th. So I've reviewed the minutes from the 11th, from the 19th, to 28th, and then the 7th appeared today, so it's mainly just doing some descriptive on the budget talks. I reviewed them and made certain additions and alterations. Does anybody else have any other additions, alterations, or corrections? Give Mr. Kowalczek a minute. Did you just get the March 7th one? As you can see, it's just recapping, recapping items we talked about to put dollars on in the budget. So hearing no additions, alterations, or corrections, is there a motion to, well, I guess I'll move to accept the sequence of minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other thoughts, discussion? All favor? Aye. Thank you. And to the money side of things, the treasurer prepared the report dated 11 March 19, so I guess that would be balances up until today then. And we have, what, half of March, April, and May, so two and a half months left in the fiscal year?
Doing very well.
Oh, good. I always like to hear that. Anyway, as far as the activity, when you look at the vouchers, general fund account balances would be $315,166. Water fund, $267,134. Trust and agency, $32,588. Materials management, a very spare, $591. Petty cash, $68. Village Green, $4,454. Hardscrabble, $1,364. Health insurance, $5,311. Sewer fund, $17,300. And no activity in capital projects, no balances. Those are after expenses of general fund, $133,792. Water fund, $101,135. Trusted agency, $32,588. Materials management, $3,071. I guess, I know I went through the vouchers, and maybe Cindy, when we look at them individually, we review and approve.
Water's high.
Yeah.
It's all the do-tos.
Oh, we did that transfer?
Yes.
Okay. And then what she means by that, folks, is that we allocate certain expenses where water budget shares with, say, health insurance, pension fund costs for the employees, and we move them this time of year to start bringing it over to general fund. All right. So a little later on, I'll talk about it too, but there was one set of vouchers I had a question about, and maybe Cindy can think about it, and we can either work on it later this meeting or Thursday night. It was a TNA batch. There's one for a particular part-timers pension catch-up money.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't quite understand the math, so I'll ask the board later. We'll talk about that.
Re-earths payment for retirement?
Yeah. We could...
Do you want me to explain it now?
Not now. I think maybe I'll show it to you, and we can work on it. But the other ones, those that haven't reviewed yet, you could look at. That all being said, we have read the report, and the treasurer seems to think we're doing okay, which is good, like we said. Do you, I'd like to, these accepted by the board, is there any motion to do so?
I'd like to make a motion.
I'll second it. Any other discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Let's see. I'll jump into police report. And then I could also talk about Red Hook Together, insurance in all municipal departments. We have the police report in your packets, February. To me, the numbers seem to be, if one to graph, were to graph them, they'd pretty much be a pretty even graph of categories and content and quantity. Total incidents handled were 342, breaks out 250 in the village of Red Hook, 86 in the town, and six in the village of Tebly. Tickets resulting were 78 in the village, includes three parking tickets, 31 in the town of Red Hook, for a total of 109 tickets issued. Arrests were 25, 16 in the village, and nine in the town. And while I'm reporting on this, we are starting to enforce more stringently our two-hour general business district parking. Many, many of our merchants and especially the restaurants rely on a turnover of parking places, and it is signed and posted and appropriately, so we've had some more walking presence. We did talk with the court and village council. We do need to revise some of the wording on our traffic tickets, so we're in the middle of working on that to make them more enforceable. And the goal is to make people realize that those parking places are not for long term, and if you have a business there, most of them have rear parking that they could take and leave the fronts to the customers who need to roll in and roll out in less than two hours. So somehow, if that could be dispersed on Panda too, that'd be great. In line with police, we also have the fire report ready. Fred dropped it off, Fred Carday dropped it off a few days ago. He might pop any thought, but we'll read it, and then if he comes in, we'll give him the floor later. Looks like a total of 87 calls responded to, that's between ambulance and fire calls. Breaks out 32 were fire, EMS were 55, and that's a combination of the village of Red Hook calls and the town of Red Hook calls. What I have yet to do is, we're doing a study of this, where I then break it out by further classifications, and we build a spreadsheet to look at it, so we can see what the demands are on the time of the men and the machines, the equipment they have. And so we have that. As far as, Brent might have it. Do you have it yet in probably your next month's report on Red Hook Together, but they were featured, next month? Okay. Red Hook Together was featured at a meeting, breakfast meeting Brent and I hit down at the Beekman Arms this week. It was, they're a combination of the schools, meaning Red Hook School System, Bard, the municipalities, library, communities that are different really active local groups, and it's been a great entity, and they've been noticed and were honored at this Northern Duchess Alliance, which is another agency that tries to coalesce and get good things to happen in our quadrant of the county. And so Red Hook Together was, it was great that featured honoree was Red Hook Together and also historic Red Hook, so it was a day of Red Hook at Northern Duchess Alliance. As far as insurance, I guess the board should know, one of our police vehicles hit some ice the other night on response and ended up damaged by hitting a tree. The officer was somewhat shaken up but not significantly injured. I think it might be one ER trip for a checkup, which would hit our comp policy. And whether or not it's a total loss, we don't know yet, but tomorrow, the insurance company rep is coming, and you might recall from a year or two ago, we have our insurance, if it is a total loss, we do have what's called full replacement value, so our car could get replaced without depreciation. But the downside is, we're down a car right now, so it's stored safely and secured, but it's not good to have a car down. We don't really have an extra one to throw them into right now, so just wanted the board to know about that. I think, why don't we, I could find trustee Trapp's report here. I might have it out of sequence. I could read that, and then I'll get off. Let's see. Building permits. This is the monthly trustee report for zoning and planning department. Looks like building permits issued were six, certificates of occupancy issued was one, certificate of compliance, one, municipal searches, two of those. I see orders to remedy, two, stock work orders, one, court appearances, zero. And then they have an asterisk there, fire inspections, see attached report. And it looks like we don't have the attached report due to a problem with the software, and I don't think we got one today, did we? Like, after this was published? Nothing came in?
No, just the money.
Yeah. Okay. That's a separate page. We're all interested in the money, too. Let's see, what a total. The net outcome of all those activities I read off there, looks like generated revenue to the department of $2,489. So it seems relatively busy for the month of February, and usually not a lot of constructions going on or different things. That's what we have there. Ms. Norris, you feel like jumping into materials management and the back page of your world, too?
Our annual egg scramble will be Saturday, April 13th, at 11:00, with the egg hunt happening at noon. It will be at the Linden Avenue Middle School with the, oh, the hunt's starting at noon. I said that already. Crafts, face, painting, and raffles will also be happening. An adaptive egg hunt will be held at 1:00 PM. Please contact the Red Hook Public Library to register for that adaptive egg hunt. The rain date is Saturday, April 20th. Apple Blossom Day is Saturday, May 11th, from 10:00 to 4:00. This event is run by the Red Hook Rotary. For more information, you may visit them on Facebook or at redhookrotaryclub.org. And we're looking forward to Hardscrabble Day. We had our first meeting last week. It will be Saturday, September 21st. We're looking for some new blood on our committee, so if you'd like to help out, you can contact myself or Ed, and we will be more than happy to have people join us for that. And you can see our little egg scramble poster. Materials management, as we've indicated before, we've had to go back to separating recycling due to global issues. However, due to popular demand, we will be making our schedule easier to follow in April. Every other week, we will have co-mingled, like we've been doing, but the alternating weeks, where we will pick up both paper and cardboard. Normally, we had one week be paper and one week be cardboard, and we were finding, myself personally, that my paper has overflown. There's no way that only once a month that could happen. So the alternating weeks, we're going to pick up both, however, they do still need to stay separated because they will be put in different compartments of the truck. Silver lining from all this fiasco of separating our recycling is we're no longer being charged for recycling, so that's good. For the month of February, we had 7.44 tons of garbage and 2.94 tons of recycling. We paid out $879 and collected $2,124 in garbage tags, and that's all I have.
Thank you. And what will happen, like Jen said, for those that are watching or listening, what we're trying to is make it more efficient for those that are in our program by combining now cardboard and newspaper on the same alternating weeks. And it is, like she stressed, important they still be separated at the curb side, so we can take them separated to the transfer station, but we're going to make it a little easier. In the next water bill, the next quarter of schedule will be posted with highlighting that, too. So it's still important that whatever happened to the market, that we can't combine cardboard with the paper. So what it means is the highway guys will probably do a second trip if they can't get everything into one recycling trailer on a given Monday. They'll do as much as they can and come back and finish the village. So you might also see a little bit delay, and some of your cardboard or paper might be out a little longer than you're used to, but it'll be gone the same morning, just a little later. Thank you, Jen. And while you were talking, I did find our artwork. I think the camera found it too there briefly, but that's a big, big day, right? Whether we put out 5,000 eggs, plus or minus?
Some psychotic, psychotic eggs.
I was thinking, as Jen was speaking too, but it's also with our support here in the village, is Red Hook Police Department, and then the Red Hook Public Library is now a big partner in that. And we hold it at the school grounds, so they give us the right to be there, and it's been fun, and it's a mad rush. But this year, like Jen said, we've, with the library working, they've created, if you have children with adaptive needs, they can come later and be a little bit more on their own, but we enjoy it. Let's see. Mr. Lang is not here. I think I saw a water report staring me in the face. Let me see where I put it. Well, thank you. When I gave it a look earlier, the curve bumped up for the month of February. This is something we watch. I don't have it on my computer screens to put up, but as far as the text provided by the operator, during the month of February, the water treatment facility treated 6,670,200 gallons of water, which is an average of 238,200 gallons per day. See below for the annual daily average flow chart. And if those of us looking at it can see that, it's relatively flat, September, October, November, December. For some reason, late January perks up, and I'm not sure what that is. I don't like the fact that it perked up, so we'll have to talk with the operator and see, are they reading the data the same way? Is there something changed? But we're not seeing any, we didn't have any breaks or anything that...
Not that we know of.
Yeah, it's...
It's almost 30,000 gallons, I think.
Yeah. Doesn't really make sense, so we'll have to see what happened there. They did the routine sampling for coliform at three different remote locations from the plant, and they came back what they call absent, which means negative. And while we're talking, we have had some more meetings with our staff, with VRI, who's our operator, and with the company Delaware Engineering, looking at, as the board knows, we've been trying to get more and more work done by our staff internally, and then use the operator just to monitor and do certain things that need credentialed people on the plant side of things. But quite frankly, it's not quite working out. We have routine maintenance and certain things we have to do, and sharing it with the highway departments, not necessarily making it happen like we like to see it. So we're talking with VRI and then Delaware Engineering to see if Delaware can give us an overview, professional perspective, to then drill down and direct VRI and/or our staff to do these specific tasks and get them on a routine. I did write to Charlie Lang, because he works with New York City's DEP, which is the water supply entity to millions of people. I was wondering if they might have a template we could grab that would say, okay, how many times a year do you exercise your valves? How many times are you doing it? How many times a year should you flush? What method should you flush with? Are you doing it? Something where we need to be able to track that and make it routine. And the last fall, it didn't happen, and now we're coming to spring when those things should happen again, and we're going to need some help, so we're working on a few ideas there. The other big thing Brent might report on too in his reports, but we're still working with CT Mail to get the elevated storage tank off our system. It's not supposed to be giving us the pressure anymore, and we are not happy that it's still connected to our system, so we're working on that again. We had some more meetings Friday on that regard. We have, open work orders are listed on the report. I met with representative of Badger Meter Company. They're the ones that provide us the meters and the radiohead readers back in phase one of our water project. They're working and rereading these, there's about 15 here that are giving some historic reading issues. We're trying to determine, is it a meter malfunction? Is the diagnosis in the radiohead? Or is it something between the software we provide to our billing company? And they're coming back. They did one review already of the problem accounts. They're going to come back and read when our regular reading goes off. I think in the next few days he goes out, right?
Wednesday.
Yeah. And they're going to help babysit it through. One thing for the board and the public to know is, as we're doing budgets, in the course of the Badger reps meeting with us, the meters we put in are now being phased out to be replaced by, not that we would do it, but cell signal transmitters instead of radio signal transmitters. And what Badger is doing on the software support side, they're moving in that direction too, and it's a new set of software that's cloud-based versus software written and installed on your computer. So there's some direction to us that we have to consider at some point, instead of renewing our service contracts and our maintenance agreements for the software we have, to buy the new software. The upside is, it seems a lot better, and it's in many ways less expensive. It's a charge per meter, and I was doing the math, it looks like it'd be a little less expensive per year, but you have to buy it upfront to get it loaded and everything, so it's something we'll have to talk about in budgets. But the downside is that it looks like the software and the packages that we use will sooner or later be phased out. Unfortunately, I couldn't get them to give me, when will it phase out? I don't know if they have a real date. It's just they're going to stop supporting it at some point, and we can't live with that, so it's a bit of a thing to deal with. Let's see. That looks like the nature of the water report. So that's that. We also, for Charlie Lang, I sent him some more info. We're working with another academic in New York Power Authority, NIPA, and as you board will recall, we're moving toward LED streetlights and that dimmable photo head and so forth. We're trying to move, we need to buy out the Central Hudson pieces, and you might recall, NIPA offers low-interest loans to do that. So we've been having one trustee shepherd that project, but he's not here tonight to tell us too much more, so we'll have to keep working on that. Looks like that moves us to the report series from Deputy Mayor Kowalczak, who we said last month, he might have missed two meetings in his multiple years on the board, so I had to synthesize it and move through, but you ready to go there, sir?
Yeah.
Okay.
And thank you for synthesizing and moving through those things. I know it's sometimes a little cumbersome, but...
We enjoy it.
Good job editing.
It's only a job you can do. I was like...
Start with the Village Green Committee. Monthly report, current balances of the related budget accounts. As follows, community beautification. We have $2,666.50 shade tree contractual, $2,350. I have a feeling that that's going to be nothing.
Yeah, it just got whacked.
Now, we had a big tree come down on Elizabeth Street, I believe.
Yeah.
Village Green Committee checking account, $4,454.92. We did have a Village Green Committee meeting on February 23rd, the Village Building, and we are getting ready for our annual spring planting and Arbor Day celebration, which will be held in May. We are, I think tomorrow, we're ordering our trees, and we're still trying to finalize the tree sites and tree species. We have a big one, hopefully, will be coming up on Benner Road and...
You didn't close the deal yet?
I thought we did, but they want to run it through the Building and Grounds Department, meeting on Wednesday.
That sounds like a hedge.
So we're doing that, and so we did divvy up tasks to add different property owners. So if we do get the one on Benner Road, we're probably looking at about 15 trees, which would be good. And anyone interested in a tree or multiple trees can contact David Pearson and myself or leave a message at the Village Clerk's Office, and we'll get back to you, and we'll be glad to plant a tree. And the Village Green Committee has also requested that the Village Board grant permission to the Village Green Committee to prune the younger trees in Richard Abraham's Memorial Park. Not the big ones, because we don't have the equipment. Not the big ones, because we don't have the equipment, but at least the small ones, I think, we could handle a little bit better.
They would do the pruning?
Yeah.
Do you have a motion in the regard?
Sure, I'll make a motion. I like to make a motion that the Village Green Committee is permitted to prune the younger trees in Richard Abraham's Memorial Park in lieu of the Highway Department doing that service, so...
Yeah, I'd second that. Any other discussion? Sounds like a good idea. All favor?
Aye. So we just gotta let Dan know about that. Village Highway Department, this will be my last month reading these Village snow ordinance. Hopefully, we'll, the snow will stop as well.
Are you going somewhere, or is the snow going somewhere?
No, the snow is supposed to stop, but... So we currently have our snow ordinance in effect until March thirty-first, and there'll be no parking on any Village streets between eleven o'clock PM and six o'clock AM, and on any New York State highways, which is Route nine and one ninety-nine, from two AM to six AM in the morning. Any vehicle parked or abandoned on any street may be removed by or under the direction of the Red Hook Village Police Department or any responding law enforcement agencies, and all costs for towing and storage will be charged to the vehicle's owners. Also, the owner or occupant of every building or lot in the Village with an adjoining sidewalk shall remove snow and ice within twenty-four hours of a snowstorm. And for those sidewalks left unclear, the Village Highway Department, so ordered by the Village Board of Trustees, may remove snow and ice left unclear at a cost of two dollars per linear foot, and this cost will be assessed and collected with the next tax levy. We generated no revenue from the sale of scrap metal during the month of February so far this year. We're doing pretty good. We've generated two thousand one hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents, and since inception of the scrap metal recycling program back in December or September of two thousand seven, we have generated twenty-eight thousand one hundred fifty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. And of course, all the proceeds go to the Village Highway Materials Management and Water Departments for tools and equipment. And anyone interested in donating scrap metal can contact the Village Clerk's Office or the Highway Department, that's seven five eight eight six hundred, and they will be happy to assist you by picking up scrap metal upon request. The Red Hook Infrastructure and Inter-Municipal Task Force, monthly report. We had meetings on February first, eighth, and fifteenth at the Red Hook Village Building, and we looked at procedures and approved regulatory agency reviews to attain a conditional approval from USDA to initiate advertisement, a request for bids, and estimate of cost of construction. So we still are waiting on two regulatory agencies, and there's been a bunch of documents going back and forth, both to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and the Dutchess County Department of Health. We had a meeting with Dutchess County Department of Health engineers, with our engineers and the manufacturer from the pump system for our sewer system on February thirteenth, and just to answer any questions that DOH may have had and help move their review of the process a little quicker through the project. We still have three property owners who have not submitted their easements. Eminent domain proceedings, I believe, have been initiated for the following properties: Thirty-four East Market Street, Jermaine and Arvin, Arvyn Coon; Twenty-five to twenty-three East Market Street, Michael C. and Victoria Lewick; and sixty-four, sixty-six East Market Street, Vincent Zitz. The Red Hook Village Water Project, I alluded to a little bit, but CT Mail did forward the control protocol for the pumps for when the elevated water storage tank on Tower Street is taken offline, and this was submitted on February first. VRI, which is our water operator, responded with questions regarding the SCADA system logic, utilization of the variable frequency drives, and the further, and further actions to acquire estimates, the program according pumps and VFD controls. On the task force, both Charlie Lang and I represent the village. We met on February first, eighth, fifteenth, and twenty-second at the Red Hook Town Hall. We're currently reviewing and proposing amendments to the Red Hook Town zoning law regarding the regulation of short-term rentals, including the zoning district restrictions, registration permits, enforceability, review of existing home occupation and bed and breakfast regulations in the town zoning code, and review comments from the Red Hook Town Economic Development Committee. And some of the reports from the committees that I do sit on in the town, it's been pretty quiet. The Red Hook Town Zoning Review Committee, the Community Preservation Fund, the Sauk Hill Watershed Community, and the local waterfront revitalization program working group did not meet in February. Going back to the Community Preservation Fund, the current balance is one million four hundred twelve thousand nine hundred nine dollars and one cent. And Kat Viega from the Red Hook Trails Committee and I met with Red Hook Town Supervisor Robert McKeon on February twenty-second in the Red Hook Town Hall to discuss use of the CPF for a possible new trail in the Village of Red Hook. So we're waiting for parties to communicate, and hopefully we'll get a new trail in the village. The Northern Dutchess Alliance, I sit on the executive committee, we met on February first, and this was, I think, we're just preparing for the breakfast that we went to last week, both Ed and I went. And I think that's it. It is it? That's it.
Good, thank you. As Brent was reading, I was thinking of something I circulated to some folks. If you're familiar with the TED Talks and things, and then Brent must get a magazine or a feed, Something Ventures, it's Innovation Collective, I think I got, you had sent a link on that too. When Brent reads, he mentions oftentimes in his reports, the Economic Development Committee, which we host most of the meetings here, since we view the village as pretty much a center of economic activity in the town, and, but it's a formal town committee, but we wanna make sure that they give input to the other committees, including the town board. And I had a thought, Economic Development Committee sort of implies like a huge company like General Electric's gonna come in, or you know, a huge corporate entity's gonna come and locate here, which is less than likely, and probably for a lot of good reasons. But this, this one group, they, they call it the Innovation Collective, and it's sort of geared on the learning centers and upgrading your own career to get, if you need career change or training and mentoring and things. It seemed like it had some value. I was toying with bringing it up at the EDC, just to say, maybe they should even consider changing their name. Maybe sometimes a name or a mission, you know, just, just being a little more, the word innovation, I think, might be a little more what we are here in Red Hook, we're innovative community, and so I think I passed it off to, maybe I didn't hit every board member with it, but have you, have you seen it at all? Did I throw it off to you? No? Okay. I think what I did, now that I think about it, I sent it off to the EDC Chair and a few, like the Chamber of Commerce and things, so, but it seemed like an interesting thing, and maybe we could think about it, talk about it, you know, we could still host it here. The thing is, right now, the actual EDC is an appointed town body who gets their seat on the committee by working with the town board and the town supervisor. Whether or not the input and the activity gets through, we might need a more of an organic group or something that actually can affect and do some workshops and do some things right here that are a little different than what the current mission of that committee has been. But I'll find the link and send it to all the board members too. It's pretty interesting. But with that, we can move to regular business. I think I had something here. Bear with me a second. We have been talking at certain meetings, the heading here is procurement policy dash the changes we wanna make. I had been circulating for a few months the red line version of it, and looking and seeing if anybody had input. We're not going to vote on it tonight, we're not at that stage yet, but we did meet with council last Friday, and I asked him to take it off red line, review version to final version, so we can look at it in a more, I know myself, I get a little confused when you're reading red line deleted versions, and you know, what's, it doesn't flow too well sometimes. So we just printed this up today, he took it off red line today and then shipped it to us. Essentially, we touched on it a little bit at our last monthly meeting, the state has increased the purchase contract and the public work contract numbers, and we would, I still think there's some edits that have to happen here, but I would ask that you all read it and see if we think it matches what modern purchasing needs, as well as what the state mandated requirements are, you know, that's the balancing point for us. Like we said at the last meeting, we had done some modernization of our old nineteen ninety-six code, we included piggybacking, and then what's called the best value option for certain purchases. And if you look at the vouchers, you'll see where I hand right now are the state contracts that we're dealing with. Many of our big purchases are state contract, and our day-to-day fuel, salt, sand, blacktop, those are state contract prices, you know, much of the big ticket items go that way. And even though we're buying from the town of Red Hook, they then bought at a state contract, and that's what piggybacking is, we, we jump in and piggyback on their, their world. So if you could, when you're feeling like you can't sleep or whatever, pull that out and take a yellow marker and give some notes. I'd like to probably try to get that in the next sixty days. But we all know for a fact, our nineteen ninety-six version is outdated and hard to comply with on the day-to-day purchases, and you know, certain key things still remain, we're exempt from bidding and so forth, attorneys, physicians, you know, things that needed credentialed, certified, licensed type folks, like CPAs. That's still in there. But I've been reading through it, and it's, it's hard to imagine every scenario, but it's, between all of us, we read it, we might, I'd feel better when we vote to accept it. It's not a law change, it's just a code change within our body of rules, so we don't need a lot of formal legal help after this. So that we would consider reviewed and discussed. Election update, clerk. As you know, in the village, we have an election in eight days from today, and it's run and operated, managed, supervised by law by the Village Clerk. So do you have any news or updates?
There's no changes. There's still four unopposed, mayor, justice, and two trustees. Our elections will be here next Tuesday, March nineteenth, from twelve noon to nine PM, and it's paper ballot.
So it'll be like the old days, what, eighteen eighties? We would take, do you put the names on it, and then how does it actually work?
I do.
And then...
On the ballot, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And then...
And absentee ballot applications must be in by tomorrow, or they can't vote.
I know Cindy put up what, six notices all around, different places? And I saw a story in the Freeman, and a story in the Northern and slash Southern Dutchess News. I don't think they interviewed any candidates, they just state facts and the dates, which is good, because we'd like people to come out. Thank you. The infamous DOT crosswalk resolution. Let's see, let me, bear with me here. When we came in, Cindy handed out a multi-page document, which is a DOT document. Let me do a little anecdotal speaking first. This is the eighty-eight thousand dollar grant we got toward a hundred and ten thousand dollar project to put more warning beacon-type flashing lights on our existing signed mid-block pedestrian crosswalks. We got stymied and delayed by trying to get the state to work with us, they have come around. I'll hold up the seven pager, just so that you see it, wrong word, it's more than, it's about thirty pages. We have, to return to the clerk before you go home tonight, they need seven copies of this back at the state, and they gave us eight, so we have to sign, if we do proceed here properly, will authorize me to sign them, and then we have to get them back to Cindy, because the state wants seven of them back. Little housekeeping. So what we've done was, you, the board will recall, we've told the state we wanna do it, we wanna roll our funding into their programs, and then they had a template funding-type resolution that we didn't like the wording of, and this big, thick document is the text that goes along with the resolutions they gave us. So if you flip through, if you're so inclined, there's back about, I guess they're all broken down, looks like about eight pages in, something that looks like this. Each section is a son pages, I can't give you a number, it's page two of three in Schedule But I asked council a couple different ways over the past few months, we have no intention of paying our village money towards this, right? And the wording is correct, right? So we have it on this document now, if you look at this, the total project's a hundred and ten thousand dollars, this federal aid of eighty-eight thousand, the state aid contribution is twenty-two thousand, local, that's us, zero. And zeros appear everywhere I can see where I'd want a zero to appear. So that enables us to move ahead. What I did, I prepared two resolutions. One, I think what we'd like to do first, it's, it's just reasserting some of the work we did earlier, essentially that we're interested in completing the tasks with New York State DOT and using the FAST grant money, and that we, the DOT sent along a template resolution that has been modified by the village and its council, which is the second one I'd like the best tonight. So I kinda wanna keep them separate, that we've looked at them, modified them, and as it says before, they are, the modifications are approved by DOT. So I can read the actual whereas, but I just wanna explain why there are two of them. And then the actual one that DOT needs to use is what we'll call the next resolution number, it's authorizing the implementation and funding a hundred percent of the cost of an eligible transportation federal aid project and state aid project to fully fund the local share of federal and state aid eligible and ineligible project cost. This is the one that comes out of DOT, it's lawyers, and that we, we're all kinda concerned about for the past two or three meetings, but we now feel we have it to a point we can live with it, and it's good for us. So I guess we would ask the clerk for what I would call the intro one, that's...
Can you do that one first?
Yeah, not the DOT one. Can you give me... I guess we have to throw in, let's see, there's the numbers, okay. I could deal out in front of you there. So we're citing at the top at the March eleventh meeting, we're reviewing it, we have the roll call, we know who's here. I'll read the document first, then we can offer it and get a second. This resolution acknowledging review of New York State DOT documents, mid-block crosswalk lighting and signs, Resolution eleven, twenty nineteen. Whereas the Village of Red Hook is interested in completing the task with New York State DOT with regard to the FAST grant, to get the project underway to upgrade the mid-block crosswalks, and whereas the DOT sent along template resolution that had been modified by the village and its council, and whereas the DOT has approved the text edits as submitted by the village, and whereas there are additional documents for the village and its attorneys to review and sign to get the project bid by DOT, and council has reviewed, approved, and countersigned the documents. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees, the Village of Red Hook, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute the documents, and I'll take that word out, execute the documents associated with the project. Looks like we have a word "and" there that doesn't need to be there. I would move that we adopt the Resolution eleven, is there a second?
Second.
And this... And discussion, I kind of hit and we've all heard the points, any other thoughts on it? I'm kind of sitting away for the next resolution here, so moved by me, second by Kowalczek. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That is, leads us to the next one. I read the first paragraph, but I'll read again, I guess we'll call it resolution number twelve and I'll put dash twenty nineteen on this form. Whereas a project for the village of Red Hook, eighty-eight pedestrian improvements in the village of Red Hook, Dutchess County pin eighty-seven sixty-one dot four-eight, the project is eligible for funding under title twenty-three U.S. Code as amended that calls for the apportionment of the qualified costs be borne at the ratio of eighty percent federal and twenty percent non-federal funds. And whereas New York State Department of Transportation, DOT, will administer and construct the project. Whereas the village of Red Hook desires to advance the project by making a commitment of a hundred percent available funding of construction work for the project or portions thereof. Now therefore, the village of Red Hook Board duly convened does hereby resolve that the Red Hook Village Board hereby approves the project and it is hereby resolved that the Red Hook Village Board hereby grants New York State DOT permission to directly apply federal and non-federal funds to reimburse costs incurred by DOT on the project and is further resolved that the mayor of the village of Red Hook be and is hereby authorized to execute all necessary agreements, certifications, or reimbursement requests with DOT for federal aid slash non-federal aid funding on behalf of the village of Red Hook in connection with the advancement or approval of the project and providing for the administration of the project. And it is further resolved that the village of Red Hook will be responsible for all maintenance of the project and it is further resolved that a certified copy of this resolution be filed with the New York State Commissioner of Transportation by attaching it to any necessary agreement in connection with the project and it is further resolved that the resolution shall take effect immediately. So when it's referencing that in the second to last resolve, attaching any necessary agreement, that's this multi-page agreement. And in anticipation, like I said, council's been here, has countersigned it, they spent quite a bit of time on it for us and with us. So I would move that we adopt the resolution number twelve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So I guess to make us stay nice and clean, why don't we hand Cindy back our copies right Seven copies they want, George. What I have next is resolution tax cap override. Generally, just, I don't think...I think we could do this more in a form of a motion. What we've done is set the stage with a public hearing and set the reason and basis for our, giving ourselves the ability to exceed the tax cap rate if necessary with the stance that we could always rescind that before we actually adopt the budget. I could read it just so folks know what we're looking at here. I would move that we enact a local law authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the limit established in general municipal law, section three C, that's the two percent tax cap. The intent of this local law is to allow the village board of Red Hook to adopt the budget for the fiscal year commencing June one, twenty nineteen, that requires a real property tax levy in excess of the tax levy limit as defined in municipal law three C. Authority, the local law is adopted pursuant to subdivision five of general municipal law three C, which expressly authorizes a local government's governing body to override the property tax cap for the coming fiscal year by the adoption of a local law approved by a vote of sixty percent of said governing body. Section three, tax levy limit override, the board of trustees of the village of Red Hook, County of Dutchess is hereby authorized to adopt the budget for the fiscal year commencing June one, twenty nineteen, that requires a real property tax levy in excess of the amount otherwise prescribed in general municipal law three C. Severability, if a court determines that any clause, sentence, paragraph, subdivision, or part of this local law or the application thereof to any person, firm, or corporation or circumstances invalid, unconstitutional, the court's order or judgment shall not affect, impair, or invalidate the remainder of the local law, but shall be confined in its operation to the clause, sentence, paragraph, subdivision, or part of this local law or in its application to the person, individual, firm, or corporation or circumstance directly involved in a controversy in which such judgment or order shall be rendered. Effective date, the local law shall take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State. So it's one of those ones where Cindy does have to file it and then we have to be sure that we rescind it. Like I said, it's always been a preventative step for us, but it's good to have it in place so we have options if we need them. I offer the motion that we adopt local law, do we have a number, Ms. Cindy?
One.
One.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, I hear three ayes, so we have sixty percent plus. In line with, I just wanted to show folks what we do, let's see.
Is there an accompanying resolution with this or?
No, we've historically done it just with a motion.
Right, because I just have a copy of our resolution.
Yeah, I have a resolution here, but that was, we did that back on February.
To set the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was number ten?
No, that was number seven.
Yeah, that was to set what we did at seven PM tonight. Anyway, what I would, I'd show the camera person and the audience, the board has seen this, but when we work a budget, what we do is we look at the tax, let's see if I can get my screens to scroll here, what's going on there? This is the general fund we're looking at and those regular attendees know in the end we end up with a printed version of this, but Cindy gets us the tax assessed value number, which is over here, a hundred ninety-nine million and change, if you want to round it, it's two hundred million. We know what our fund balance was last year, that's three hundred sixty thousand, that's a rounded number there, but it's just for our budget discussions. And then we go through the top pages, top lines are our revenue projections, where I have yellows, where we're anticipating more revenue, less revenue, things that I flag as we're developing the budget. The way it works in village law, the mayor is the chief budget officer, but the way we develop a budget here is it's a collegial board, we interact and work together and we try to come up with consensus and then move from there. What we're trying to do is, we do show, those regular folks know, we signed with T-Mobile to put another tenant up on our cell tower, so we're projecting that rent should start even in this fiscal year, but we can project a little more rent next year, so that's a revenue increase there. We're looking to do another art show, like a public art show of some sort, we're looking at ways to fund that and so forth. One thing I thought we'd mentioned to everybody is, you might have read the papers, the state's trying to take away, it's called AIM money, we call it state aid revenue sharing, it's a ninety-six hundred dollar payment to us. The governor's budget takes it out, we've been lobbying to put it back in with our local, other elected officials and people we know in the governor's office. One option that's come up, the governor's talking about allowing counties to charge internet sales tax and then sending that money down to us through the sales tax sharing program. Right now, we're counting on it either staying in the state budget or the county somehow making it up within next fiscal year. It's not a sure thing. If I, what's cool about our model, if I take that down to zero dollars, everything else changes in this whole model, ranging from what we have to raise in tax levy to the tax rate per million, per thousand, rather, and so forth. So what we do is we highlight and code things, that was revenue side, then expenses side. Again, like here you'll see, the prior budget year, we had five thousand budgeted for service contracts, that's like elevator repair and alarm system, different things we do here, generator maintenance. And next year, we're going to build that slab for the tower area, we'll probably put that as far as insurance and a few costs that we're going to have, it's going to cost us a little more for a service contract up there, but we will show another revenue line because we're going to charge the customers pieces of that, our operating cost. So we have to, we look at the revenue and the expense side going back and forth and that's the hard part of the budget, you have to make sure you think of everything before the year begins and we spend a lot of time on this. Yeah, one thing we're talking about is moving the garbage fund back into the general fund and still selling tags and everything and this is one we have to play with here, it's, it looks like a big increase in expenses, but it's because we're going to move, move certain transactions back into general fund there, but it will balance in the end. Public art. This is, Cindy today got the low sap basic numbers, this is something, we can never totally project how many firemen will qualify for low sap, but right now we're calling it fourteen thousand like last year. But what it takes, it means in our general fund, we anticipate spending just over two million dollars. And we do the same thing for water, not as many budget lines on water. And we do, like you said, we'll take one off, let's see if I can go back, somewhere in here is material management. I've written it as a separate budget now and then odds are, I'll recommend that we'll take this back into general fund, but it'll be balancing, it won't have a negative impact on general. And sewer is always our question here, this is tiny, let's see if we can make it bigger. As everybody knows, we have no cash flow now, so we're putting twenty thousand dollars from water in as a due to, due from, just so we can pay some miscellaneous expenses. Almost all the expenses are still paid off from the zero interest environmental facilities, short-term loan, so the design and the legal that we're incurring is paid off a different world, not the sewer budget, but we're trying to project, once we are operating, what's it going to cost us? But right now, we know there is no actual sewer facility, no expenses right now and no revenue, so we're just giving ourselves that twenty thousand to work with. But that's sort of introduction of tentative budget. Cindy and our treasurer, she'll be treasurer and our controller, looked at what the controller from the state level would give us is carryover or carryforward, and I want to verify some numbers the next few days on that. I'd like to see it printed out just so we have that. The board, we all talked about it, but I'd like to see that in black and white so we know up here what we're, what we're really working against. That's that. Next, I have a bullet for New York State DOT, perm thirty-three C, village slash fire company hundredth anniversary parade. A lot of words there, what that means is, as we know, August sixteen and seventeen, there's going to be a lot of fire company activity, Tivoli turns a hundred, Red Hook Fire Company turns a hundred, and they've invited about seventy-five other fire departments and companies to come help celebrate the big event. Part of it involves a big parade, bigger than I think we've seen in Red Hook in ten years. So it triggered, and I forget how much we talked about it at other meetings, but Rhinebeck was getting pushed by state DOT to fill up perm thirty-three C for their center clause because they take up so much time, so much real estate with the event. So we're filling one out to help the fire company. It's not a major expense, but part of it is the logistics of street closing, road closing and when you have that long a parade...
There's a parade route.
The current route has been changed from the high school to the West Market to main intersection, a right turn down Broadway to Firehouse Lane, which is pretty straightforward. So we need, we have Patrick and the highway guy who's working on road closure. Part of what we're trying to do is see if the state could come up with, I'm not too hopeful, but the traveling mobile notice signs where, like if you put it down by nine G's, you know, major community event ahead, stay on nine G if you're trying to go north instead of grabbing nine. We have thought about it and tried it for Hartschel Bowl Day years ago, but they told me, oh, they're several thousand dollars, they're not like their state-owned signs at least back then, and I think they rent them from like Volvo rents, those kind of companies where they actually, it's a third-party vendor. So I don't know for the fire company if they would do a better deal or make it free, but we, our next meeting is Wednesday on that. Like I said, it's Tivoli, Red Hook, and then it's the town, the village, and village of Tivoli, trying to help them, but it's going to be a major, major event and not too many, it's an amazing milestone, a hundred years, it's something else. Anyway, body armor. What we have is body armor, like firefighting, turnout gear, ages, wears, and needs to replace, to be replaced to keep people safe and it's a time for our police and their body armor. Patrick's been out on a mission and it's state contract and you might have, I don't know if it made this voucher pack or not, but our plan is we have financial assistance from the office of Senator Serino, one grant for five thousand and a second one for twenty-five hundred. The package deal is about ten eight for all the expenses and it includes all that they need for the number of officers that we can and have on duty. So they don't share body armor, it's custom fit to you and your shape of your body, so you can't like leave it hanging in a locker and guys switch it out, it's designed to be customized. What I'd like to do with the board is authorize us to move ahead, not so much necessarily with the purchase, we have to do that, but the way I'd like to finance it is, I reached out to Salisbury Bank and since it is grant money, it's got that same lag paperwork chase timeline where we, if we lay it out today, we might not get the grant money even before the fiscal year ends, we'd like to hope that happens, but, so I'd like to do it like we've done some other purchases, roll it into the Salisbury Bank line of credit that we have. The current interest rate is three percent, so if we held it for, say it takes us ninety days to cycle it out to get the grants in, I think it's worth it, we can write one check, Cindy and staff can like keep the tab on it. And somewhere here I drew up a resolution on that. I think we called it body armor funding statement with resolution. Do you guys have that in front of you? It'd be thirteen, did you say? So, resolution thirteen, body armor funding statement with resolution, line of credit and grant. Whereas the village of Red Hook Board has received grants to purchase body armor via the office of New York State Senator Serino, has researched and reviewed options with its police department and complied with purchasing obligations with the state contract supplier. And whereas the village selected KVI uniforms and equipment in Middletown, New York to supply and fit officers for a cost of ten thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars twenty-eight cents. Whereas the village will utilize a purchase order to make the order and list the state contract number and whereas the grant is reimbursement style grant and the village will incur the costs and then submit them, submit for payment to New York State. Whereas the village also has line of credit with Salisbury Bank at three percent interest. Therefore be resolved, the village treasurer is authorized to utilize the line of credit from Salisbury Bank to pay the direct costs. The mayor and/or treasurer are authorized to exercise line of credit up to the amount of the purchase cost. And I put a little float here just in case there's some odd costs, we don't know about, up to twelve thousand five hundred dollars with the line of credit option utilized. The village will use grant receipt amounts, donations, and budget lines to pay down the line of credits accordingly and reduce the amount borrowed from Salisbury Bank to a zero-dollar balance for this activity. I would offer that as a motion, I have some discussions still to go on it, is I would move that we adopt resolution thirteen. Is there a second?
No second.
My discussion point is, I outlined that we have five and twenty-five hundred from Serino's office and then the police department does periodically get separate and distinct donations and they did receive quite a few with, before Lee Cookingham passed away and then upon his passing, certain of the donations were given in the name of the police department. So technically, the money, we don't really see where it's going to hit any one line of the general fund other than donations and the grants, but this lets us park it and the line of credit, get them, get the guys in them and then Patrick will have to do the paperwork. Like you know, grants, you have to incur the expense first and then... Like, you know, grants, you have to incur the expense first and then get your money back. So that's the plan that we're trying to do here. So we had a motion and a second, um, any other discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. This one's a little more general and contemplative, but the last bullet item on the agenda is on sewer use law and modifications. When Brent was doing his report, we have the three, what we call holdouts that haven't signed easements. And, um, we're coming up, and I wanted to float it by the board. Something when we were talking about at our last meeting, we've been authorizing and doing the usual steps of eminent domain are hiring and paying for an assessor and appraiser to look at the value of the land that's being at issue. And just to repeat to everybody, let's just get confused, we're not taking anybody's building, their property, it's just a strip of land. And, um, a hundred and thirty-five folks were sent easements, plus or minus one or two. And all but three sent back, and it's the three that are holding aspects up. So we're toying with an idea, as you might recall, we did, the sewer use law was a formal law process. We had to do public hearings and the timelines and the notices and all that. But we could, and we're having council work on something that came up as an offshoot to the discussion at the last meeting. It, it is problematic in the sense that we're offering people something at no cost to be installed and connected and then they only have to pay the annual operating and maintenance costs. And those that are forcing us to incur additional costs for the condemnation and eminent domain work, they're still getting the hookup and everything for free. So it's, it's almost like they're changing the playing field in a way. And we're looking to see if we can get something that would be consistent with what we're trying to do and modify slightly our sewer use law. Right now, the sewer use law says if you're in a service area, you must connect. And it goes through, well, if somebody is forcing us to incur costs and delay to connect, can we take the position, well, no, you cannot connect. We will, we still need the area for a main, but we can't offer the same package deal, the free connection and installation that we're offering everybody else. Because as you know, nobody has to pay upfront for the new tank, the new service lines, the pumps. It's all in the project and designed to be shared cooperatively by everybody. So everybody but three have just agreed to share cooperatively. So we're trying to make it balanced back, okay, on those three that didn't, how, how should they then pay something toward the installation later on? To be honest, we'd have to see, but I'd like to direct counsel, we'd have to get the actual wording. We think it's just gonna be in one sentence, putting a comma, saying certain things, um, that would enable that to occur. We talked about it briefly, um, I don't have the exact wording in my head, it's just more consensus from comments at the last February meeting. And, um, but I think it's worth exploring. And, um, so if, I'd like, you know, for counsel to be authorized, it probably costs, you know, an hour or two of time to find the wording, where it would go and so forth. So I would move that the board tonight authorize counsel to the sewer project to look at potential modifications. We, we would then still weigh whether we're gonna do it or not, but if it can be worked in, consistent with public policy and law, you know, I think it's something we could then discuss. So I would just ask that we authorize them to look at it a little bit and, um, let the street know that we're not really looking to spend tons of money on, um, delay and extra costs and then we'll, we'll see what this wording is. So, like I said, I don't have a resolution drawn up, but I would move that we, um, ask counsel for sewer use law to examine any revisions, that we can, um, continue with the process, but look at not having to incur the cost of hooking up three non-easement signers at this point in time and have them absorb the costs later when the hookup, you know, after the system is built. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I think that's a good idea. It's just a matter of it's an incentive.
Yeah.
To hook up now as opposed to later.
Right. Yeah, that's the thing, incentivize, and we've built the whole thing to be no upfront cost for anybody. And, um, like I keep saying, a few of them actually, at least two of the three holdouts have a lot to gain by being on it. And it's, doesn't, doesn't make sense for us to be delayed and cost, incur costs. So we had a motion, a second, on favor? Aye. Did you get that, Ms. Clark?
I did.
Okay. What we had, let's see. Like I said, we, we don't really need to go to executive session. We do have to do public comment and then on those vouchers, could you get me the voucher pack there and I'll, let me do a little business here? I'm not sure that the treasurer needs or has to answer tonight, but what I want to do is set the stage. I'd like to approve payment of the vouchers except for one that I saw here to the controller's office. And the question I had was, um, it's paperwork that was submitted to us by the controller. It's, it's giving like a gross, looks like a salary number for this individual. I don't need to know names of anybody.
Yeah, I don't wanna get into it.
But, um, it just, I, I'm reluctant, you know, it's.
Well, it's already been paid, it's not village funds, it's employee's money.
Um, so because it's in TNA?
It was, all it was, was arrears, so we have an employee.
But how would he have this, how could this be the, the person's money, that kind of money?
Because it's been pulled out of his paycheck, but it wasn't reported to New York State.
So he's a.
It's just backlog.
So we're not, it's not our arrears?
It's not village money.
Okay.
No, not at all.
Okay.
It's his money.
Okay, 'cause I was wondering if we were making this up.
No, it's just somebody is buying into the retirement system, old time, part-time hours. I did that for my part-time years, I bought into seven years before I was in the system. It's his money that's been deducted from his paycheck, it's not village funds.
But where is it, in our account?
It was in trust and agency.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I just copied the whole monthly report for backup to the voucher.
All right, so it's, that does answer my question, 'cause I thought it was coming out of a fund we didn't budget for, so it's, okay. All right.
Trust and agency is not village funds, there's not any money in there. It's all employees' money.
But it's not totally true statement because we moved from general fund to waterfront to TNA.
Well, yeah, but it's earned money by, so anything that is, checks that are cut out of there has already been earned by the employees, like dues.
But still, like if you look at the vouchers, there's thirty-three thousand from general fund to TNA.
Right.
So it does move general fund to make payroll.
Yes, the big one.
So, all right, so I'm okay with that. Thank you. We would then move toward public comment. Saw you taking notes out there. Maybe we could, uh.
Mental. Mental notes.
Let's go with our rule, Mr. Brent, can you hand him that?
Not a lot of questions today or things, but.
Oh, good.
Going with something here. Oh, I wanted to ask a question, it's come up from people who've asked, told me about it in the village. Again, I've done this before and usually say, oh, it's just a rumor. I know usually come up and they confront you afterwards, I don't know if these people will or not. Uh, if a vehicle has to be towed, a tree falls on it, breaks down, car accident, as a rule or as a courtesy, uh, if the person had a, a place to, a tow, a towing outfit they wanted to, you know, use, they were usually allowed to use it without a problem. Uh, if they had nobody in particular, then you go off the list. Now, if I understand, Red Hook told somebody, uh, he could not use the one, uh, his preference, he had to, uh, had to go to a, off the list, which incurs hundreds of dollars in extra fees. I was wondering if that's a standard thing the village is now doing, that you have no discretion as to who tow's your vehicle?
Is this towing for what, for snow?
No, car, this particular car, it probably went into the woods.
Yeah, what, well, I didn't hear the last part, George.
The car went into the woods.
Into the woods.
So if your car breaks down, I mean, I, I don't know what it is either, but.
Well, I could ask another question, did our police attend the scene?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I know our police follow the protocol of rotating tow.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's if you have nobody in, in mind, no particular person, then you go to rotation tow 'cause you don't know who to call and leave it to them to, to the next person on the list. So this was kind of the first time I've heard of it where they, they refused.
Well, I could tell you, it's no formal village policy, it's just, the only real policy is folks need tow, police go through rotation. I would think with my car and I knew where I wanted to go and I knew the towler, I would want my guy to tow it.
Right, it, it seems to have been that way pretty much all right along. I'm just wondering, maybe it's a particular incident, somebody's not familiar with it, but, uh.
Was it all local, a local tow shop involved and that kind of stuff, like?
Not that, you know, right, somebody would have towed. He's outside the, the village limits, but he was, would have towed it, I think the car might have been from outside the village limits also, but they would have picked it up. But they were told, you have to go with our rotation tow. And I think that, you know, I, I don't know if it's a policy or maybe some misunderstanding.
Yeah, we have no, like in our village code, nothing that deals with tow rotation, it's more the police, they use the state police rotation list. And I think it's more designed to keep the economy evenly spinning with all the qualified tow shops, you know?
Well, there's always been a dispute as to who gets, there's certain favorites out there apparently. And again, it's not just local, this happens all over the place.
Yeah, no, that's why they have a rotation.
This is just the first time I've heard of somebody saying, no, you cannot pick who's gonna tow you, we will.
Yeah. I know of no reason you couldn't, let's say your brother-in-law had a tow shop, you know, you would want him to tow your car, it's like.
Call AAA or something, they have their.
I could talk to the PD, my gut feeling is it might have been somebody with less experience or.
That's my thought, but I just wanted to see if I get a clarification.
There's no direction from us, you know, don't go off rotation, it's just, rotation's like, you know, we're designing, it's like bidding, it's sort of to keep it equal.
Right.
But we could, we could look into it.
Okay. Uh, I just want to ask about, I mentioned the DOT crosswalk, which I'm opposed to, that whole thing, you know that. Pointing out, just one more time that.
Did you walk here?
Yellow does not mean stop.
Right.
And I think being, we can't fix stupid, we know that. People walk across the street, don't look, they're looking at their telephones, they're texting. If you want to get rid of people, you know, I, I think it's unfair to push shit on people who carry insurance.
What's that last part? I didn't get that part.
People operating cars carry insurance.
Yeah.
So if these people walk out in front of you, whether it's your fault or they turned, that you were, you know, whose fault it was, you gotta pay. But people don't think, you know, they don't stop and look both ways anymore. Even if in a crosswalk, you should look both ways because not everybody's paying attention, they might be texting also when they're driving. It just encourages stupidity and I think you're gonna end up with, with, with dead bodies, actually.
I don't think so.
I'm gonna be very blunt about it.
I don't think so.
I think it's very dangerous.
How'd you get here, did you walk or drive?
I drove over.
Okay. Well, you could walk, it'd be safer walking.
I don't like using the crosswalks as they are, I like to walk when it's two-way, north and south, east and west. I only have to look two ways rather than at the intersections.
Well, take your comments under advisement.
Okay. Uh, one of the things in that resolution was that you were gonna be taking over the maintenance of it, responsible.
Yeah.
I, you know, that's gonna cost, I'm just.
Yeah, no, it's, what that is, um, the board, I could explain it, it's, it's the actual, we wanted solar and the DOT originally wanted to do hardware connect to land sources, which would be like, no lie, hundreds of thousands. You need to buy rightaways and dig up sidewalks and connect to, to what, you know, central Hudson Poles.
I think the ones out in town are solar.
They are. And that was one of the hangups, one of the delays was the patent trademark world was in a war with DOT, couldn't buy any more of those. But no, we convinced them and told them we want solar. And with the maintenance is, we will, when the batteries die, replace the batteries.
So we'll get two, two like they have, the town has with the, the strobes.
But given how people are so intelligent anymore, the liability, if that thing should not work and they hit the button and walk because I can, and they get hit, I think the village might stuck, get stuck with some liability on that.
Yeah, municipal law gives us, we have to have notice of a defect. And so if you said, hey, Ed, the one's not working down by the seniors, um, we would have a reasonable ti- amount of time to go fix it. And if we're late, then we, somebody could sue us, but we have pretty good protections as municipalities, but thanks.
Okay, that's it.
Thanks. All right, so, any other info, comments from the board?
Are we meeting on Thursday?
I would like to, yes. Primarily because technically the tentative budget is due March fifteenth. We still can work and change, but as you'll recall, after the fifteenth, changes have to be by concurrence slash, you know, motion. Whereas now we can just say, I want more money here, I want less here, you know. So we do the eleventh, I'm thinking we, well, we have to submit a tentative by the fifteenth, so I'll present it to clerk, the treasurer rather, and, you know, so. Then we'll talk about our next meeting, but we should do it Thursday. Anyway, we have to pay those bills and the treasurer explained that the one in TNA is funding already put in there. I guess, um, I get, I, I still have a question though for the treasurer, how did the employee put the money in? Like, we were taking it out?
On his paychecks.
And then, and then he then, but is he now deciding to join the pension program?
He's already in it, he's just buying back time for he joined.
Well, but that, that means we weren't taking, if he didn't join, we couldn't take anything out, so he couldn't.
So if somebody starts to work for us in January of a year and then in June, they say, okay, I want to join the retirement system. So I start, if they're new to the system, I start deducting three percent from June first. So he says, well, can I buy the time that I worked from January to June first? So that's called arrears. So the state retirement system sends me a letter and says deduct this much for pay period to get caught up. And it's still their money, so that's what it is, arrears.
But we're paying fifteen hundred now in this person's case and then you're gonna then deduct.
It's already been deducted.
But how, if he didn't join the system until June, how would you know to deduct?
I'm just using fictitious numbers, dates.
Yeah, but how would it? I, I think, I would move that we approve general water and material management and then we can work on this tomorrow. Just to be sure, I'm not quite following it to be honest with you, 'cause if you're not in the system, you can't have anything deducted until you're in. And we might owe it, I mean, we probably owe it, but.
But we do owe it.
It's a hit to general fund that we didn't plan and, um.
Comes from his paycheck.
Coming from his paycheck, it didn't hit general fund.
But Brent and Sydney, I don't, if he wasn't in the retirement plan, we wouldn't be deducting anything. So there's nothing, you know, there'd be no accruing funds. Seems to me now the general fund is paying fifteen hundred bucks to make them whole and current. But the, the B side of our argument is I see the gross calculation that the controller's office did or the retirement office did, the twenty-six thousand, whatever.
Twenty-six thousand is everybody's income for that month, it's not just that employees.
I think I, I would like to, with the board's concurrence, I think I would ask, why don't we do general? I'd just like more clarification of it, let's approve general materials management and materials ma- and private water. Do I like, and tomorrow, Cindy and I could look at that.
And then Thursday, Thursday we'd make a resolution to approve.
TNA. Is there a second? On favor? Aye, thanks. I think we're ready for Mr. Gravalcik to.
I think to make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting.
I would second it, on favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.